If you'll rise and join me for the pledge.
Dilegence to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you and good evening. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting for August 3rd, 2021 at 6 o'clock. And we're convening with John Paul Fagnon on the phone, Don Chaffee, Sharon Russell, and Mary Ashcroft. We hope Joe DiNardo is out hay. He's trying to get the hay in for a long time. Okay, the orders are over there on JP's desk. Pass them over to Don. He will be in when he can to sign them and Joey will as well. If you have any questions, let's raise them. If not, we have several sets of minutes. We'll start with the July 20th ARPA meeting. And board members, President Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, all of us were, so either Sharon or Don or JP can make a motion to accept the minutes of the July 20th meeting.
I'd like to, I'd like to correct one thing.
Shall we, shall we get the motion second? Motion made?
Second.
Okay, yes, Don.
On page four, as it, as it relates to page five. On page five, we have a majority of board members were not in favor of the commission pursuing it. That would be the
G.
The G, that would be
Okay.
Uh, the town, the zoning. I'd like to go back over to four. And I, and I think we really should add a, an L after the K. Saying that item L, the board was polled, because we didn't vote, board was polled on going forward and a majority were not in favor of this proposal.
Okay, wait a minute, what's the difference between what we're talking about?
Well.
The Conservation Commission
Right.
is four.
Right, that, the Conservation Commission, the board was polled and there were three of us that were opposed to the idea. And it wasn't a vote. And, but that wasn't put in the minutes.
Okay, so what's your suggested change? Give us the language.
Uh, L. Board was polled on going forward and a majority were opposed to this proposal. And of course, no vote was taken.
Sure, it is page four. And we're adding an L after K.
Okay.
Board was polled on going forward and a majority. What was the rest of it?
A majority was opposed to this proposal.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. With that amendment, any other corrections, additions, deletions? If not, all in favor of the corrected minutes for the July 20th meeting? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. Next, the minutes of the July 27th meeting. Present, Mary, Sharon, Joe, and Don. So, Don or Sharon, you can make a motion.
So moved, accept.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All vote aye. Any opposed? JP was absent and is so noted. Okay, and then the minutes of the July 20th discussion on ARPA. And members present, it was, it was a full board, so anyone can, no, wait, 1, 2, 3, 4. Mary, Sharon, Don, and JP. Anyone want to make a motion to accept those minutes?
So move.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion, corrections, deletions? If not, all in favor of approving those minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Mary.
Is it an aye?
Yes.
Okay, and all vote aye.
While we're on, while we're on minutes, with your permission, could we go back? Could we go back all the way to July 6th? I don't believe a motion would be necessary, just an agreement of the majority of the board on that present versus absent. I was marked absent for the July 6th meeting.
That was when you had your surgery.
That was when I had my surgery and I was on. And I had a conversation with Bill. There's a reasonable explanation why Bill didn't realize it because I was on by phone. And he didn't recognize my number at first anyway, so. But I was on from like 5 or 6 until, I don't know, 15 or 20 minutes after and until the gendarmes came at the hospital and, and kicked me out of there. So, but I intended to be at the whole meeting, but I, I was present for, uh, I was present for John Paul's presentation on the CNC fireworks, his investigation, and, and so forth.
How long were you on, do you know?
Pardon me?
How long?
About 20 minutes.
Okay.
And, you know, and
So let's note in these latest minutes. Well, no, let's put in tonight's minutes. Let's put in tonight's minutes a recognition that Don was present by phone for the first 20 minutes of the July 6th meeting. Okay.
And, you know.
Anybody have any objection to that?
No. And then, of course, if, if Bill could go back to those July 6 minutes and please take out the absent that he's got in there because, because I was not absent.
And we'll note in these minutes.
Pardon me?
We'll note in these minutes.
Because you've been doing it tonight.
Because we don't want to go and redo all of those because those have been approved and adopted by the board. So, let, let's just note it here.
I'll let you be the boss.
He's got to sign these.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. There, those are minutes. Okay, so, we're gonna hop a bit around. And we're gonna go down to item B under new business, board to meet with Otter Creek Engineering. And I gotta tell you, the Water Sewer Committee met, this is Don, Joey and I met with Bob, Bob Clark, sorry, Robert Clark and, who was with you? Craig Jewett. And we got a lot of good stuff done in the post-road sidewalk. We discussed that a little bit and we'll talk about those. But the thing that really grabbed our attentions, two things, were some free money available from the state up to, up to 100% funding. And we were pretty excited about it, so we wanted to bring Robert in to talk to the full select board. And you've got JP on the phone and Sharon here that you didn't, they weren't at this Water Sewer Committee meeting. So would you sit up there and tell us about what might be available?
And while he's sitting there, I'd like to add, Mary, to your comments that that was probably one of the best committee meetings that I have attended.
Wasn't that good?
It was.
Well, that's because we found out about free money, Don. We always liked that.
That too, I was bouncing in my seat. There were other good things too.
Okay, Robert.
Yeah, so thank you for having me. And again, I'm Robert Clark with Otter Creek Engineering. And I met with the Water and Sewer Committee to talk about water funding that might be available through the state's drinking water state revolving fund. Essentially, over the next four to six years, the state is planning on investing a lot of money in infrastructure through the ARPA stimulus bill that's coming. The state's gonna get about $1 billion. That's gonna be distributed through programs like the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. And one of the things that we've noticed with this year's intended use of that money is that the state is really trying to incentivize planning. They realized that in 2008, 2009, when this last stimulus money went and became available, that they missed an opportunity to move projects forward because Vermont's a fairly cumbersome state when it comes to permitting and regulatory review and just the timeline that it takes to get approvals on projects. And so this time, what they're trying to do is incentivize communities like Rutland Town to go seek money, plan for projects, get them quote unquote shovel ready so that when and if there's money available, substantial grant money available for construction, communities will have projects available that they can get out. And I think the thought is that it would stimulate the economy. That's, that's what they're trying to do when they fund these types of things. But in reality, it allows you to address aging infrastructure, address new projects, really look at things that need to be done. And so we came to kind of talk about that as a, as a primary focus because I think over the next four to five years, there, there should be substantial money in that program. And the town had an interest in potentially extending a line on post-road. And that's kind of where the conversation started. The second piece, which is somewhat unique and not everybody's aware of it, is the state had passed what's called a three acre stormwater rule. Essentially, properties which have over three acres of impervious surface that's buildings and roads and drives and things of that nature are being required through the state regulatory process to retroactively permit their properties and their businesses. And in many cases, they're going to be required to construct a stormwater collection and treatment system that meets current standards as a way of treating runoff. It's an effort to reduce the amount of pollution that leaves a site and enters waters of the state. And it's been ongoing for probably at least a decade the state's been pursuing this, this legislation. But currently, there's actually funding available through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund for municipalities to sponsor projects where you could reach a, a simple understanding with a commercial developer, commercial property owner who is going to be subject to these rules and get access to free money, I say free money, 100% grant money for design and planning related to those stormwater systems. And again, those are to be constructed over a five-year period essentially. The state has gone through and they've identified every, every property in every town to the best of their knowledge through Google imagery and other mechanisms that have over three acres of impervious. And they've notified them all within the last calendar year by written communication that they're going to be subject to this rule. But in reality, you know, we find in our business that, that most people got that letter, didn't understand what it meant, tossed it to the side and haven't really been pursuing or looking at what they're going to need to do. And it's kind of a unique situation because in many instances, the, the design, the planning, and then the construction of these stormwater treatment systems, you're talking about thousands of dollars of expense for existing businesses in Vermont. And the timing, in my opinion, really couldn't be worse with everything else that's going on and everything that everybody's really going through. But this has been a long time coming. It's not something the state just decided to do this year. So I think there's a unique opportunity for Rutland Town to maybe reach out to properties in Rutland. Let them know that this is coming. See if they'd be interested in participating in a sponsored project and then submitting for this grant with the state to assist those businesses in getting access to money. The reason why it's through the Clean Water Program and the reason why the town of Rutland would need to be involved is simply by state statute, your, that program is allows access to municipalities. It doesn't allow access to private developers. And so they kind of found a, a unique way of being able to fund or co-fund some of these projects.
Now, are you, did you refer originally to that as a 100% reimbursable loan?
Yes.
So it's not really a grant. It's, it's going to end up being effectively a grant, but
That's correct.
I think it's very important that the businesses know that it's a loan that we're taking.
Yeah.
That's happens to be 100% reimbursable, but we're on the, you know, it's a loan.
No, that's, that's a very good point. It is a loan. The state programs in general, the Clean Water and the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, they offer forgivable loans and, and the process is you essentially, as the town, submit an application. It gets reviewed, much like a mortgage would for your house. They go through an underwriting process and then at the end of that, they outline the terms and conditions. And they say, you know, for your loan of X dollars, you have to pay back X, you know, Y dollars. And it's over this many years at this percent interest. And when they offer forgivable loans, what that says is the, basically the balance goes to zero and you don't have to pay anything back. And, and you know ahead of time as the town, what those terms are before you even borrow any, any money.
So the risk to us is pretty minimal.
Yeah.
Because we can reject if they say, well, you've got to pay back 30%. We could just reject it and say, no, that's not what we were looking for.
That's exactly it. You know, and, and your investment would be the administrative time in submitting the loan application and, and providing the supporting documents that they request during that review.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know roughly how many towns or businesses in Rutland Town?
We were looking at roughly 15 properties.
15 properties in Rutland Town?
Yeah.
So this is an opportunity to, first of all, to partner with private business and to really help them out. Because if we do this forgivable, forgivable loan grant to cover all of their planning and engineering, am I correct on that? Then what they have left is the actual construction.
Correct. And, you know, who knows what might, may or may not be available over the next few years. But just like the drinking water program, the state has earmarked money to go towards the Clean Water Program for stormwater retrofits. That's in the, that's in the intended use. So hopefully there could be some construction incentives over the next three or four years for those.
And in addition to those two things, there's also administration, which Robert said he could help us out quite a bit with. So that's also a, a cost factor that we would alleviate from the businesses.
So let's start with the second thing, which is the business planning for stormwater mitigation. Is there, we've got four out of five members of the select board. The Water Sewer Committee strongly recommends that we proceed with seeing if we can get this loan. JP and Sharon, how do you folks feel about this?
Sounds good to me.
JP, any thoughts?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, good, thank you. So I guess we'll start exploring that with your help. Now, back to the first thing, which is money available on a similar basis for forgivable loans for planning for water. This came up because of the request to consider extending the post-road water line to another couple of houses. And then we got talking about the fire districts within town. And then we got talking about areas of town that may have good water and how could we make it available? And then we got realizing that we could use some overall planning to get a handle on what we have and where we should be going and what our options might be as a town with our various water supplies. So that's where the first forgivable loan idea comes.
Yeah, so I think the, the conversation, as you mentioned, started out with the, the post-road water line extension and what might, funds might be available. And then we just got to talking about the numerous fire districts that are in Rutland Town and how they're all in a different financial and operational state based on how they've been operated over the last 40 or 50 years. In reality, we've, we've seen a decline in public participation and public servency and, and people being interested in taking ownership and responsibility of their communities. In, in the 1960s and 70s and 80s, these fire districts popped up all over Vermont. They're everywhere. And I would say over the last 15 or 20 years, they've been slowly dissolving for a variety of reasons. One, people just aren't interested in maintaining them as much as they used to be. Two, they're relatively small group of users that is required to follow the same rules and regulations that large systems like the city of Rutland are. They're, you're under the same rule, regulated as a public community water system. That can be a pretty daunting thing for a, you know, essentially a homeowners association that has 40 or 50 houses on it. And then the final piece is the cost of the infrastructure is expensive to maintain and replace over time. I think each one of them is in a, is in a different situation. So what we talked about was maybe looking at what each of those situations is for them, identifying if there's an opportunity to consolidate and look at a Rutland Town water system. Look at other options, maybe instead of having their own private wells, you know, potentially connecting to Rutland City or, or joining those fire districts together so they have a bigger user base that they can support themselves. I think there's a variety of different alternatives that you could really look at. And it's a really unique situation here in Rutland Town, Rutland City, both geographically and, and politically, how, how everything is kind of together. So I think it's worth looking at. It's, it's, it really is more of a 10 to 15 year plan to identify what might need to be done with those systems. But it, it was something that we had talked about. And at least right now, there's an opportunity, just like the Clean Water Program, to submit a, essentially a forgivable loan application. And if there's money available, they'll let you know if you get funding to, to look at that.
Anything you want to add, Don? You were in on the meeting.
I just, I think, I think I would characterize it, I guess, generally, I would characterize what, what Robert was saying as a very unique opportunity to craft some quite creative cooperative relationships with the city of Rutland.
Yeah.
Which would benefit our townspeople and the city as well.
And potentially West Rutland.
That's correct. It was, it was a good discussion, really.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
So Sharon or JP, any questions?
No, it sounds, it sounds like the win-win situation to me, but.
Okay. So are we okay with proceeding on this forgivable loan package for a water system study?
I would say yes.
Don's nodding yes, I'm yes. JP, are you okay with this?
Sure.
Okay, and again, Robert, this is, if we get the proposal together and the state responds in a way that we don't, we're not comfortable with because it's not 100% forgivable, we can just say no, right?
Correct.
Okay. So thank you. I think we're, we're very, very grateful for you bringing this to our attention. And I think we can proceed along with two good projects. Yes, Byron, sorry, you were in on this meeting too.
Is there any some type of notification coming from the state to the municipalities in regard to this? Or is this notification being done to consultants?
In regards to both of these situations? So the state
Three acre rule, I understand that. That's, that notification's been out for a couple of years.
Yeah. So the state's only real notification that they did this year is they, they issued their fiscal year's intended use plan for those revolving funds, which they, anybody who's ever signed up for a loan application or done a project through the state gets notified about that. And it's essentially like a 35-page document where they outlay how they intend to spend the money that they've been allocated. So those programs get money each year from federal EPA. And then they have this additional ARPA money that's, that's going into their program. And so they publish that and it went out. But other than that, I, I'm not aware of any outreach that they're doing. And, and so they really are kind of relying on the consultants to get the word to not only the towns, but also to the private developers who
How do we go about applying for this fund?
So
We still have to wait a little while?
Right now, you can apply at any point right now. They just issued this on July 15th. So everything became available on July 15th. But you can apply at any time. And as far as going about and identifying what might be needed, I think what we talked about with the Water Sewer Committee, at least on the stormwater side of things, is putting together a, a letter that would go to those properties which have been identified, trying to provide some additional communication with them as a first step to just see if they're interested in participating. And again, I think a lot of people just kind of put it to the side and haven't looked at it. We, you know, we get calls weekly with people realizing that this is coming up because they have a compliance of essentially submitting a, a written statement that they acknowledge that they're under this rule by the end of the year. That's the first kind of step. So those keep trickling into our office.
Did you, when, when you identified the number of properties, you said 15 businesses. Did you identify the total amount of acreage impervious?
I've seen it. I can get that number to you.
Do you know roughly? I mean, we're not hold you, but
It's gonna be over 45.
Yeah, I, I want to say it was close to 60 or 65, but that included, so the schools are actually subject to it too, but they have access to a different funding source, but they were included in that list. So I, I don't want to misquote it, but I want to say it was in the 60 or 65 range.
Now, did you include Harbor Freight? Because they're not down yet, but they're under construction and
You bring up a good point. So those, anything that's being built today is subject to current design standards. So when they go through their permitting process with the state of Vermont, they're actually getting a stormwater permit. And so those types of developments are building that into the cost of developing. This process is essentially eliminating any grandfather provision that's ever been there and making all of these properties which have potentially been in existence for years, decades, become compliant with the current stormwater rules. It's, it's a really unique situation. And I'm not aware of any other situation where they've eliminated entirely grandfather provisions. So it's, it's a, it's going to be challenging for many of those.
So what you're saying is they won't need this because they're already required to do what they're supposed to do with their permit.
Correct. Anybody within the last few years has been.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
In fact, I think when we were waiting, when we had a site visit down there and we were talking to some of the folks, we were waiting on the 250 and they were waiting on, I, I think it was stormwater
Yeah.
to come through as the last.
Any, any development since 2017 is covered under the newest rules. And, and even then, most of the developments between 2002 and 2017 are fairly compliant with what we found. They had to put some type of stormwater system in for their development. So they, they're relatively easy to retrofit to meet the new standard.
And what part do you play in this? Will you help Byron and Bill get together the grant applications?
Yeah, so I, I have a list of the properties and, and I'll give the, the loan applications to Bill and help him fill in what's needed. And we actually have a draft of a letter that we've used to reach out to people who are in this situation that you guys could, that I'll get to the board that you can modify. And I would suggest you send it, you know, from the board to, to these property owners.
Okay, good. And your costs, is that part of the administrative piece we can ask to have covered at the grant or?
So we, we do that as a community assistance type thing to help move these things forward. Our costs are usually covered when we get to, you know, permitting and design. You know, that's where we
That's part of what's included in the
The actual application, correct.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions for Robert Clark? Oh, you should do a real quick. Tell us what we're going to do as the next step to answer the question about whether we can extend the post-road water line.
Oh, so I think for that, I, I actually have it all set up. I just got to bring it to Byron. We have a, a pressure gauge that allows us to read what the pressures are. And because that's kind of on the upper limit of where you're able to serve, the first thing to do is just kind of see what the pressures are there. Byron brought a, brought a really good point that the pressures might be different when school's in session. So we offered to have him hook it up and just see what's there now. But in reality, we should wait until the first couple of weeks of school and, and kind of record what's, what's happening. If, if the pressures are marginal now, it's likely to change and, and be slightly worse. But that's the first step to see if, to see if it's possible.
And then, yeah.
Does that change a lot though? I got to think about that. Because the school, the school is coming out that large eight-inch main.
And I went back and looked at our files for the town. It, it shouldn't change too much, but if it's marginal now, the use there could impact because of how much higher the two inches could, could drop it down.
Two inches, that's
That's where we
That's what we've come to move for.
Yeah.
There's, at the end of that blow off, you know, there's a lot of flow there. What the pressure is, I don't know, but there's a lot of flow there. We have filled the tank out of that. That blow off before, and you've got to kind of hang on to it whole.
Yeah, the, the recorder that we use basically takes a reading every, every second for as long as you have it hooked up. And so it would measure exactly what the pressure is in the system. So we would see if the school's use or, or anybody's use really impacted what the pressure was at the end of the line. And I think we talked about the, the state requires you to have 35 pounds of pressure available at all times to make sure that you, you're adequately serving customers. So that's really the threshold that we would want to look at.
And so your reports on what you find out will come back to Water Sewer and then we'll be ready to make a recommendation to the full board on whether to extend the water line and/or how far.
Correct.
Okay.
I think your, your answer to Mary's last question was quite impressive. And just in case anybody's forgotten, I think we would refer back to the entire West Rutland, Rutland Town Cooperative Sewer Agreement was precisely because of that attitude that you have towards the community. And, and I would thank you profusely for that.
Yeah, thank you.
I know it benefits you, but it certainly, it's not something that anybody else does, so.
Yeah, well, I thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. And, you know, we, we try and provide an independent opinion with all of that stuff because really you want what's best for Rutland. And, you know, we, we try and provide an independent opinion with all of that stuff because really you want what's best for Rutland. That's the most important thing, so.
And Rutland Town.
Yes. Exactly.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Clark? All set. Well, thank you very much. Come anytime with good news.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah. This is an easy meeting, yes. So back onto our agenda, is there any member of the public who is not, who would like to be heard, who is not already on the agenda? Do you have any other callers in, Bill?
Nope.
Okay.
Just Lydia.
Okay, hi Lydia, Mr. Nicholson.
Yeah, I was just curious if the findings of facts were going to be made public on the C and C hearing.
They are public.
Yeah, I, I talked to them before and hadn't.
Okay, um, so are they on our website or available?
They're not, I mean, they.
Okay. I, I, I consider that all public record, so.
I just assumed.
Yeah.
Erroniously apparently that they'd be with the minutes of that meeting, but.
No, because this was, we were in a different mode. We were in quasi judicial, we heard the evidence, and there were three of us who issued the decision. So they are available, Bill's got them, I consider them public record, I think we all do. Yeah, so we can post them?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thanks for calling that to our attention. Okay, moving on. I will note that I circulated among the select board members an article from VT Digger, and it was picked up as well in the Herald that the ARPA funds, which Congress designated to go to county governments, in Vermont, of course, we don't have a county government structure. So those funds are going to be sent, sent instead to municipalities. And so in addition to the, there's a $430,000 in ARPA funds that we're going to be getting in the next year, we will be getting a share of the county funds, which when I calculated it earlier, it's somewhere around $700,000 to $750,000. So we've already started trying to figure out how to use the money, but now we have even more to figure out how to use. So keep those ideas coming. I know that many of you have already tossed them in. Well, keep them coming because we have more money coming.
Boy, such a dilemma, huh?
Isn't this, you know, this is a fun meeting. I like this a lot.
It won't even all fit underneath my desk.
Yeah, Don, not.
Well, I'll take some over at my desk, I mean, I.
Mary, could you tell, you know, you've said this twice now, how did, if you, if you wouldn't mind sharing, how do you figure that we got 750, I mean, is it just a, is it a?
It's a per person allocation, and it's somewhere for the, for the first round, it was somewhere around $94 to $96 per person in town. Our population is 4,040 something. So that comes out to the 430. Now, this wasn't my math, this was what was on the website for League of Cities and Towns. The allocation for the county money, I think, is like $192 per person, something like that. Multiply it by the 4,040. Now, don't hold me to that because who knows? When it gets to Vermont, there could be some adjustment of that figure, and it could be allocated differently than what the earlier estimate. Because I'm, I'm now quoting stuff from like two or three months ago, and this is pretty fluid. But it looks like we're going to get a big chunk of money. Okay, any other questions? All right. Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Just before this meeting, I had an email. You probably had the same email explaining the, the county versus, yeah. But in addition to that, it said that we can, we'll be able to start seeing that money in our accounts within the next few weeks.
Okay.
So that was good news.
County money or the, the first round?
The, I think the first round.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, the, the one that we had to apply for, so that's the first round.
Okay, good.
So that's exciting. And to go along with that, I followed up with our representative, I'm going to say our, but the representative for one of the digital record systems, on the COT system that I've been talking, communicating with. His name's Mark Kirk, and he sent me an email about, I, I was wondering the, up, the status of our quote for this system. He's not yet gotten us a written quote, which I, I required. But he was wondering about, there's about five towns that he was looking into, including us, that he could get a discount for this program because we may or may not use the ARPA funds. And if we do use some ARPA funds for doing this, the discount could apply. Now, I don't have all the specific details. What I did ask him is more like, to follow up a little bit more. But I did want to put it out there as a question to you all. If we were looking into companies for this down the road, what are some of the things you want to hear or see or have them comment on that's interesting to you guys? To have like a, a pool of information that you want to choose from. So say this guy is from COT Systems. Are there specific things that you would like him to explain to us if we were to question him about his, the COT Systems?
Okay.
So I just wanted to put that out there because this is one of a few companies that we can ask. But he got me thinking about, well, what do we want to know? And first of all, we do need some written evidence of what you could provide, so that was one thing that I wanted to.
Okay, any thoughts or comments from select board members about what, this would be digitalizing our land records? We haven't decided to go in this direction, but if we do, what are some questions that you would want to ask and have answered?
Well, we want to have some time to think about those questions.
Yeah, I, I think we got to mull it over, you know.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I wasn't looking for any response, but so just putting it out there because he, he got me thinking, and I'm like, you know what? I'm not the only one in this decision, so. So that's the second thing I wanted to talk about. And the last thing that I wanted to say for purposes of people listening in the future of this meeting, we have the tax bills printed. They are going to be stuffed and addressed by the end of this week. And hopefully out into residence by the end of this week, if not the earliest of next week. There's a few things that I wanted to remind our property owners that we get a lot of questions about. So if they wanted to refer back to this, this is the only tax bill that you're getting for the entire year. It does say it on your tax bill. In fact, our tax bill has a lot of information on it that, it, it looks very wordy. But if you're looking for any number to the state about your homestead declaration, it's on the back. Your due dates are on there. Everything you want to know that you could ever ask us is right there, but we are here for any other questions. The other thing that we get a lot of is, why don't we send out reminders for each installment? The reason why we don't do that, and although it may be seem friendly, the reminder is your tax bill, and it would cost the town way too much money to send out constant reminders for each installment, given paper, given envelopes and stamping and all of that, and the time for people to do that. So.
Credit to you because you have the signboard out on the front.
Exactly.
And I mean, that's right on the main busy street, so.
No, so we try to do the alternative things that we can do to remind everyone of our tax bills. Our due dates have not changed and don't plan on changing. It's September 10th, January 10th, and May 10th. We remind everyone on Facebook, we remind people on our website, in the paper, in the circle, and at the school and at town hall, so.
And at select board meetings.
And at select board meetings. And then the last question that we always get is why, if they sold a property and they're no longer in this property, why do they get a tax bill to that property in their name still? And it's because there's an April 1st deadline. If you sold your property before April 1st of that year, the new owners will have their name on their property and on their tax bill, but if you sold your property after April 1st, it's going to be the old owner's name. And the old owners and new owners get their copies. So again, I tried to cover everything, but you can call the office with, with any other questions, but they will be going out soon. And that's all I have.
Two questions. Do you need help stuffing the envelopes with the tax bills?
Um, I have three volunteers. I can always use more. We have lovely ladies that have volunteered from the.
RSVP?
Thank you very much. They're coming tomorrow to start. We do have over 2,000 to stuff, so three ladies, always, we could use more help. And then you said you had a couple of questions.
Yeah, the other one is actually an announcement, the Select Board Met last week and set the tax rate, we're pleased to tell you that the tax rate is down on the town side and down on the school side. So a great, see, this is a very fun meeting.
It is.
We're happy to announce that.
So much fun.
It is. It's always nice that, that they went down and, and that is, it started with the state education rate, and it just continued with ours, so good news.
Good news. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else, any questions?
A question now, when you say that the, the tax reminders for, for tax dates are at the school, do they put it on their signboard?
Thanks for saying that. That's yet an email. I have yet to ask them if they could do that this year. But in the past, we've used signs in the lawn, and they're, they're kind of broken and decrepit. And I did purchase a new sign for here, and if they don't really want to put it on their digital sign, I have plans of getting another sign like that for the school, but I'm going to reach out to them and ask them if they would.
No, I think they'd be happy to do that.
I think so, too. I, they've been always great to work with.
Very visible. I mean, I always look at it when I go by, see what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. And word of mouth, too. I mean, hey, your taxes are due.
Taxes are due. Uh, any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Carrie.
Thanks, Carrie.
You're welcome. Okay, Barbara Noyes-Poole, Town Planning Commission. Good evening, Barbara.
Yes, hi, up here on the big screen.
Yes.
Tonight. Hello there. Um, Bill and I got to, got some early work done on ordinances. We posted a more updated flood hazard area ordinance that the town passed. What was online was something from 1987, but it was updated in 2008. So we now have the 2008 version up there. There was no adoption date other than that year, but, but we got, we got what was passed by the, the Select Board at that point. From the Regional Planning Commission, I've been working with, Byron's been helping out on this, and Andres on a, a stormwater pond retrofit at the Windmere Development. And there are still some discussions about the impervious footprint. They're working on the, the extent of a deer yard, a wintering deer yard for that. So if you recall, there's, there's two directions here that Andres is going, is whether the, the stormwater permit that the development has now has been exceeded or if they're still within that, whether that needs to be updated. And the other one is helping the town meet some of its stormwater goals, its future flow requirements. So we're working with the homeowners association there and working through this. We, what, what we want, you have, and the state have, you, you have a match to a state grant to, to expand the stormwater pond there. So that's what Andres is hoping to design for that grant. Just needs the permission from the homeowners there. He will be back before you with, with more complete information on this.
Okay, good. Yeah.
And the only other thing I have regarding the Pocket Park and the survey, we have a work authorization with the company that we chose to do the survey, MSK, but we don't have a contract yet. So hopefully at the next meeting, I will, you know, we'll have that. And hopefully I'll get it in time to distribute it before the next meeting.
Okay. And we would need to approve that. We've already chosen MSK to do the survey, but this would finalize the contract with them, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the conditions of the, the contract.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Barbara and Bill, for coming up on those ordinances and, you know, you had offered the Planning Commission to do this work. We do appreciate it. And as you can tell, we're trying to update all of our ordinances, and these are important parts, so thank you for your work on that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we, we got some of the low-hanging fruit.
Well, that's okay, that's okay. Any questions of select board members for the Chair of our Planning Commission? Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you, Barbara.
Sure, thank you.
All right, um, just before I forget it, we will need an executive session toward the end of the meeting to discuss a personnel matter. So before we adjourn, remind me, we need to do that, please. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Thank you, Ed. I don't really have much of anything for you tonight, other than the item on the agenda for the grant agreement for the, that's the second Better Backroads Grant that I had applied for.
So this is different.
That's, that's different than the, than the project commitment form. That should have been in your packet, I think.
Yeah.
It was.
Where's my pink folder with all of the? Okay, now I don't have it here.
Should have been, it was in your packet.
Okay, I'm going through.
Should have been.
Daily log.
Hey, in the packet.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Standard Grant Agreement, State of Vermont.
And up in the upper right corner should say BBR with a number.
B R O 916, and this is for AOT in the town of Rutland. The amount awarded is $4,600.
That's correct.
It is to the town from AOT. Our match is $1,150. And it is for road inventory?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Shall move.
Motion's made to accept the grant.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, and wait, let me see if we all have to sign, or does anyone sign?
That's just you.
Yeah, it's just the board chairman.
There it is, okay.
Here's the, on the second page.
So did your motion include having me sign on behalf of the board?
My second as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, Byron.
Okay. And then the other thing was the uh, uh, project commitment form that I had emailed to you over the weekend. That was in regard to the to the uh, small scale project uh, grant that we had applied for from the state from John Kaplan's office. We were granted, uh, we were given that grant. Um, this is the first step is the project commitment form. The next step will be another standardized grant agreement. And then there's a meeting after that with a uh, an AOT project manager.
Okay, and this is the Small Scale Bike Ped Project Program Project. This is for post-road sidewalk extension. Uh, Don took a look at it and caught the year was wrong. The funds must be expended by twenty twenty, which of course is passed. So I think you had a little homework to do.
Well, I sent an email to John Kaplan asking if we should use that form or if the, you know, if he intends to make the correction and send us another form. Have not heard back from him yet.
Okay.
In any case, uh, my recommendation to you is yes, we should accept this, but wait two weeks and and do it then. Um, by then I think we will have some preliminary data in regards to the post-road water line.
Oh, yes.
So that we don't build a sidewalk and then decide that we're going to have to dig it all up and put a new water line in.
Okay.
Um, and there again, if 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 we do have to dig that up, then maybe we should get it done right off. So then the part of that grant money can be used to go along with construction money on the water line. So the sidewalk can be built at the same time.
Thank you.
That it that's done. So my recommendation is sit for a couple of weeks. Um, and then we'll we'll take a look at it then. And maybe in the meantime, I'll hear back from John Kaplan in regard to the.
Byron, is there a drop dead date when when we get this approved? Is there a drop dead date as to when the sidewalk construction has to be done in order to?
That's what that twenty twenty day is.
Oh.
And that's why I'd like to know what is that a twenty twenty?
I didn't know whether that was just.
Is that a twenty twenty-two date or is it a twenty twenty-three date? Say. You know, it would it would it would help with our planning to know that. So I will follow up again with John and hopefully have an answer before the uh, the next board meeting.
Bill, would you put this on the agenda for the next board meeting? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So is that? That would be a calendar year uh, deadline. So there wouldn't be any month. It would just be that if they say twenty-two, it's got to be done by December thirty-first, twenty-two.
Yeah. They might. They might say that might be a twenty twenty-two deadline kind of thing. I don't know. That's why I need to find that out.
Okay, sure.
And then the only other thing to report is we're almost completed. Uh, in fact, we did complete all the driveway uh, aprons today and we will be starting full time for the next couple, three days on the school sidewalks and that will complete that project. And then all that's left to do for cleanup then is just to put some shoulders on and uh, rake out a few lawns, that sort of thing.
Good. Roadside mowing.
I'm good with that. Should our, should Robert Clark's response to Terry Purcell um, be what he's looking for, uh, then he will issue a the stormwater permit for the shared use path. And then once that is then sent out to all their butters and there's no complaints or whatever, uh, we might be under construction by September.
It's for the shared use path.
For the shared use path.
Because cleared the cleared two fifty pending receipt of this.
Correct. Two fifty is all set to issue their permit as soon as A and R issues their stormwater permit.
Good.
Okay.
Roadside mowing. I think the first round was all done.
Yep, and uh, as soon as we get the sidewalks pretty well done at the school, I'm gonna put uh, one of my guys right in the more again and go around and do a thorough, push everything back, that kind of thing.
Great.
Yep, and that'll be at least a two-week project.
Okay, Select Board questions of Byron Hathaway. Anybody in the audience? That quieted you down, did not? Yep. Okay, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Not much to say tonight. Hardly any calls the last couple of weeks. Um, did send a truck up to the school for the tapestry kids week or two ago to fire safety and squirt them with the hose and um, other than that, it's been pretty quiet. Had a station meeting, um.
Don't say that too loud.
Would you, uh, yeah.
Yeah. Now, go ahead. Why don't you um, actually, under our committee reports, why don't we, why don't we have the chief report on the?
I would think so. But could you put the mic there and then speak up? I got hearing aids. I'm sorry, but you know, I just.
Turn those up.
It's hard. You're you're such a quiet, reserved fire chief.
I know. Unless I get mad.
Okay.
Look at the look on Carrie.
So we had a meeting.
We had a meeting um, up at McKinley Avenue Station, just trying to you know, get a plan for a fire slash police building. Um, trying to see if it'll fit on the property, seeing if all the utilities are going to work. Um, trying to find the boundaries of the property. Joey was going to talk to somebody, trying to find a couple more pins. Um, other than that, it's pretty, how far we got so far.
Okay. So we had uh, Fire Chief and the two assistants. We had Police Chief and the Deputy. We had the full Select Board. And we spent some time walking the property and again, trying to decide just what the chief has said, whether there's room there for uh, a new fire station and the police station as a whole public safety complex. So um, stay tuned. There's more to come.
That's right.
Yeah. Any other Select Board questions of our Fire Chief?
No, just that uh, and you know, for future reference, I really think, you know, the our Fire Chief and our Police Chief are we- well, they're 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 twenty-four, seven in their positions, even though the our Fire Chief has another job, but you know, it's every day. And it's weekly meetings and it's monthly meetings. So I would like to hear a lot more from you, Chris, and and Ed, as we proceed with this thing, because you you have the expertise. And I may ask questions when we're at meetings and pop this in or that in. The reason I do that is I want to hear your answers, but I've I trust the expertise of the people that are in the job. So uh, that's going to be meaningful to me in making any decisions going forward. So don't be afraid to be vocal about what you need, what you want, what it has to be and so forth. That's my view.
Yeah, and if you need to get mad, just speak up. I'll see if I can work on you.
All right.
I knew you would.
So I think we agreed to have a public safety facility meeting next week, Monday at four o'clock? Okay.
Is that Monday, the ninth? Yes.
Monday, the ninth.
Yep.
Which is right before the five-thirty intermunicipal committee meeting. So.
Well, that meeting would be here.
It will be here and we'll we'll take a look at. Now, we had estimates of square footage, so I'm assuming that we're going to do the next step and see what the ideas are for the what's actually needed.
Yep.
What what the space is needed for. So, okay. All right. So if you could add that to the list, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the major considerations, uh, you know, from that meeting were water supply, uh, fire suppression supply and property boundaries. Uh, especially potentially getting a little triangle at the back uh, in the mix somehow from Mrs. Baird and uh, and the property line on the uh, on the east side where the bank goes down to know exactly what our property limits are to build a retaining wall and actually capture some amount of additional footage up to maybe twenty feet, which would be critical. So if those property lines could get those pins could get put so that we can, maybe I can go by and I could actually see where that pin is down at in in the grass there in front of those trees, that would be good.
I knew where it was. I'd put one there for you.
Yeah, for some reason, Don didn't want to go over the bank to look for it.
Oh, no, they said Dell and I.
Well, yes. And then Dell said Snake, and that was the end of your participation.
Would have been a would have been a dive, I'll tell you.
Okay.
We're we're we'll work on that.
Good. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief. Yes, we've got on the desk packet of the police calls.
Roughly, we had uh, sixty calls for service the last two week period. Uh, some of those are directed patrols and some are traffic stops. Again, Officer Schuma Horn, Shirma. Officer Angie. She uh, has been doing a great job stopping cars. She also was at the town school for a tapestry thing. She was involved in that also. She's been great at the school. Uh, we did have a, is there any questions on the calls for service? As you can see, the Green Mountain Plaza does keep us busy. We also had a complaint. We've had some complaints of things occurring at the Diamond Run Mall to uh, include sexual assaults and there's a lot of vandalism at the mall. I know they said they blocked it up, but there's doors now are completely smashed unless they weld it shut. There's no way to secure the doors.
So what what do you need us to do with the mall owner so that we're not up there all the time with the police services?
They need to take and send somebody up there to check it every single day. They're not doing that. By the way, they'd know the doors were open. And uh, all their uh, air conditioning units on top of the roof have been totally torn apart and all the coppers ripped out of them. Uh, the inside has been smashed. Every, almost every piece of glass in there has been broken. Uh, it's like a hangout for whoever. And obviously, people have been tearing into the wiring system downstairs also. The Sears door was open. Uh, the Sears door on the on the south end is is totally damaged. There's no no sealing up at this point in time unless they literally weld it shut or bolt it shut of something of that nature. They need somebody to come up there once in the morning, once at night, just to check that place and see what's, because every night they're going to try to get in there. They're going to break into it again and again and again. And then we have walkers that do nothing wrong, but they just up there. It's a nice place to walk. It's and they call us up and say, hey, look at this has happened, that's happened. And that's what we're dealing with at this point in time.
Okay. So let's, um, I was scribbling notes. Let's put a letter together and with Bill's help and we'll sign it and send it out and tell the mall owners what we need. We've we've heard promises for three years and not a whole lot has happened. So.
Well, I really think we need to emphasize that they need to provide security up there.
Yeah.
And and you know, and what what Ed just said at the end of his uh, dissertation on the mall is the fact that there are citizens, just regular people that are going up there to walk. And they need to be protected. You know, that they've got to have some security up there for those people. Because if we got people that are tearing equipment apart, then we got people that could be injuring these citizens. I mean, it's a no man's land. It's a anyway. I continue to feel that they they should provide security on a.
Well, let's try telling them um, morning and after, morning and evening checks. And if that doesn't work.
At least twice a day would be nice.
Twice a day. If that doesn't work, then the next step will be to ask them to provide security services. Let's see how that.
Ends out.
All right. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
As far as a comment on uh, you said referred to Chris myself as experts in our fields, but I wouldn't call myself an expert on buildings. Uh, I would, uh, I have a rough idea and Detective or Deputy Chief Washman have a rough idea of what we need uh, in order to to have a good police station. Not not in excess, but also we understand this is like a a fifty-year-in-the-future type thing. So we will ask for a little more than what we need at this point in time, because and as years go by, things in this day and age change rapidly. So it's in our best interest to build a little more than we need and uh, to accommodate the towns in the future. And that's what we'll do as economically as possible without being greedy, I guess you could say.
Sweet.
Uh, the other thing I'd like to ask is we have uh, we deal all of our our radar equipment. We deal with Stalker. It's our our cart that we have in all three radar, four radar units we have at this point. I think we have four. Uh, it'd be nice if we made them our preferred vendor this time. That's they're the the best stuff at, you know, in the market at this point in time. We've bought everything from them. So I guess I make a motion or ask them a motion to uh, put a Stalker radar server, Stalker radar, as our preferred vendor at this point.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
They have to, don't they have to submit a request themselves under our policy?
No.
Or preferred vendor?
No, once a year, we go through our list and we update and we approve the list of preferred vendors and the departments usually kick in. Um, they go over the list and they tell us if there's somebody new to add. I think we added somebody for fire, was it, last time? Yeah. So, no, they don't ask themselves. I mean, they can ask themselves, but it's also the department heads we rely on.
I think it's Stalker Radar.
Okay. Okay. Is?
Yeah, I'll make I'll make a motion that we approve. What's the name again?
Stalker Radar.
Stalker as a preferred vendor for the police department.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to add Stalker as a preferred vendor. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you want me to go or the our police.
You've got to be louder, Ed, with that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Our Police Committee meeting. Do you want to go over that?
Um, real briefly, I mean, we didn't have any action items to bring to the full board, but if you want to summarize.
I go, I didn't take notes, so I'll go by.
Okay.
I may have taken another other piece of paper, sorry. Uh, we discussed uh, my uh, frailties as a politician. My apologies. We'll work on that. Uh, you had also talked about moving forward with hiring uh, the fourth officer. And that's in the works at this point in time. So as we get close to that, we will uh, move forward. I do have to have uh, Officer Angie come in and meet you all at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before the year's out, before this.
I don't want to.
Before the school starts. Before the school starts, I'd like to have her have her introduce her, her to you all. Uh, yeah, that's about all I have at this point in time.
Okay. We did talk about um, getting more visibility and controls out into the community and we're working on that. So folks who have talked with us about that.
We've talked about some marking that we will talk more about in the future.
Yes.
Bring it up for.
Yes, indeed.
I think that's all I have at this point.
Okay.
Steve, could you give us an update on the press release of today there?
So sometime last night, uh, people broke into the new uh, building behind all these, what is it? No, I can't remember the name.
Harbor freight.
Harbor freight. Uh, it's in the construction phase and they took uh, some conduit containing wire and a chop saw and uh, probably about three thousand dollars worth of stuff. They did have it somewhat secured, but not that well. Do you have some photos? Anybody has any information about it? Contacts at the at the police office, seven, seven, two, four, three, two, seven, I believe is our phone number. Can leave a message there and we'll get back to you. So hopefully we can, we did look into some. We had some a few leads today. We did, we followed through them to the end and it turned out to be nothing. I suspect it has something to do with the uh, people that are starting to take a residency in that section of the town. So.
Temporary housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, called TPs.
Housing is a very loose term.
Yes.
Yeah, well.
Camping.
Camping.
Roughing it.
Okay, any other questions of our Town Police Chief? If not, thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Uh, Mike Rowe, Town Recreation Director. Uh, Mike Rowe, Town Recreation Director. So the new, the newly replaced slate signs on the main loop looked terrific. Thank you very much.
You were going to say they were already broken.
No, well, not yesterday. They, they do look good. Jamie and I took a walk.
They were there today too, and I went. Um, first off, thank you to Byron and Jim and lifeguards, uh, for the senior luncheon. It was a, a big hit. For those, most of you look like you attended, uh, someone got a doggy bag, did it make its way or did Billy eat it all on the way home? Okay, uh, so thank you very much for attending. That's, uh, obviously a huge hit and a win-win for everybody, uh, up at the pool. So hopefully it was enjoyable.
It was wonderful.
Long staff, I mean, you know, feedback is good.
Those kids were excellent. Your, your guards were.
So the, what, for people who weren't there, I mean, the, the lifeguards were the waitstaff. Um, they each took a table, we got refreshments, we got dessert. I understand the lifeguards made the dessert and made the sides.
They made, they do the dessert and the sides.
And Byron cooked on the grill?
Yeah, we had halfway beef.
Very excellent beef, really good.
By the way, remember to put that bill in the box, so we can pay you for that food, please.
Okay, so big thank you to all of you folks involved. It was a lot of fun.
So is that going to be your second job, you know, once you retire, you're going to be a.
Short order cooker, yeah. No, little, little beef stand on the side of the road.
Yep.
Um, the letter for the grant, hopefully Bill put it in your packet, didn't get it, didn't check. I sent you a couple hours ago. Okay, so we're in the process of finalizing our grant, which we talked at our rec committee meeting last week. I'm looking to, uh, get some free money from the state. Um, right now we're up to about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in projects. The shared use path has been put into that, um, so that could be, or take the money that's already there and be put to another cause. Uh, our letter of intent, which, um, Bill has, and you'll have it next meeting, but it will be going in on Friday. Um, I would like to thank Byron and Bill and Mary Beth Foley for huge help in getting the letter of intent, and hopefully they'll, they'll pick our letter.
Okay, and so the process then is if they tell us they're interested, then we submit a full grant application?
Yes, but then even though they, that's what was unclear. I was on the webinar today and it was kind of frustrating. They're offering twenty-five projects, they have five million dollars.
Whoa.
So I was gonna ask, and I should have, I'm like, well, what if you get thirty-five projects and you still have, I mean, are you going to give more money? You gonna, what are you going to do with all the money if it's not all being used? So I think they got a lot of money and they're just trying to figure their way through it at this point, and talking with Mary Beth, that's kind of what we, we figured, so if they accept our letter of intent, then they will ask for a full grant, and then we're not sure if that means that you get it or not, so then it might be another process after that. But they'll know because they're asking for all the money upfront, like how much you're proposing. So they should have a pretty good idea of how much money they're going to kick out, and maybe they'll include, include a few more. So there's a lot of improvements that are in the park that we talked about, and, um, Sharon can talk about that at our, because we had a committee meeting last week as well, a couple weeks ago. Two other things, uh, yeah, I hate to say it, we are closing on the twenty-ninth at two o'clock. That is the last day of the pool, that is Sunday, the twenty-ninth, at two o'clock. So it's about a month since we're right at the beginning, but like all good things, they do have to come to an end at some point. Last year we were spoiled because we could go a little longer because kids didn't have stuff and we could stay open. That's not the case. So twenty-ninth, school starts for kids on the first, so it comes pretty quick.
Do you need any authorization for the letter of intent?
No, when you look at that, um, there is Byron's on it, uh, Bulli's on it, uh, Sharon's on it, Joe's on it, a whole bunch of people from the town, Mary Beth is on it, there's a whole bunch, the school is on it. As we go further, there will be letters that will be asked to submit, but for right now, no, I do not.
Okay.
But if we get that, then, uh, yes, I will be coming around looking for letters, um, for support. And it's a much more, um, extensive process after that.
Since rec committee met, Sharon, you want to tell us what, what happened and what you're thinking for?
Well, Mike, Mike, I mean, Mike, you can speak to it too.
Yeah, I, so we, uh, we've had, a grant came up and, you know, in my five-year plan and stuff like that, and talking with Byron and all kinds of people, and their, their input, some things to do for capital improvements at the park. Um, we want to expand our disc golf from nine to eighteen. We want to put in anywhere from three to four miles of mountain biking trails to connect with the interconnect. We don't have a lot of mountain biking trails. Um, I have proposals for all these that just happened to kind of come in. I would like to add a fitness, kind of like a parkour station up there. We want to add pickleball. Um, up at the, uh, the place we want to expand our walking trails and, you know, obviously signage. Um, those are the big ticket items that are expensive. And even more so, like when I was getting, uh, information back from vendors, I, I was like, are you sure? And they're like, yeah. Everything has doubled in a year, and I'm like, wow.
Yeah.
Like, really? Like, it costs us twelve grand to get the tennis courts, basketball courts painted two years ago. It's going to cost sixty-five hundred to put in two pickleball courts a quarter of the size. Everything's gone through the roof. He explained it quite clearly. Same thing with fencing and things are just very expensive. The playground, the, uh, fitness equipment is up in, uh, it's up at thirty-two thousand. Where the one we put in the school a couple of years ago was maybe twenty-two. So it's gone up a great deal, but these are great programs. Uh, we want to try to go, um, full, all year round. Eventually we'd like to do some cross-country skiing, so purchasing a snowmobile and a dragger to groom the trails or groom to groom the trails. So these are little things that this grant, um, will go a long way, and that was the majority of our conversation for our committee meeting, unless I missed something, Sharon, I think that was pretty much it.
Good.
So we need to spruce up the park. It's getting used quite heavily, as you know now, even more so, which is fantastic. That's what it's there for.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing, the last thing I have on there is the Humane Society, uh, I just met with them and gave them a tour today on the Gator. One of the ladies rode in the back, it was quite interesting. Um, they want to do a fundraiser at the park, uh, in the middle of October on a Sunday. They wanted a Saturday, and I said, that's a transfer day, so we're doing a Sunday. They're going to do like a five K run, a bike course, uh, walking course and a big fundraiser for the Humane Society. So we started laying the groundwork for that, and I'll have some more information as we go forward, but that sounds like a really cool event up at the park. Other than that, everything else is just kind of starting to transition slowly. Uh, if anybody has any questions, that's pretty much all I got.
Select Board members, any questions for Mike Rowe?
No, Mike, I, I just do have any idea where that pool is leaking or just, you know, it's leaking, there's.
I know it's leaking. I don't know where. It was funny, I was just thinking when I was sitting there. I have a guy that comes to my pool and finds the leaks in my above-ground pool. So I almost thought of calling him. The way he does it, he can tell me right where the leaks are, so for a hundred and fifty bucks, he patches my pool at home and finds all my leaks. And if you have above-ground, he's a great guy for it. But I could ask him to come in and see where the, I have a funny feeling I know where they are. They're in the corners, but there's no visible from the ground, and you wouldn't know nowadays anyway, because it's raining, you know, forty days and forty nights here. Um, but yeah, it, 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 yeah. We're, we're putting in water every now and then, so.
You might.
The ark is a separate grant.
If you can get it, if you can get it done for a hundred and fifty bucks with your guy.
Yeah.
Well, that's if he's, I called earlier and this was like in, uh, early June, and he was having some issues, and he said, call back in the middle of July, and my pool was fine, so I can call him and find out, because he has a way.
Can't, I would suggest that you give paddock pools a call, because I mean, they're the ones that construct them, and I'm pretty sure that they, they have someone that can detect those leaks.
Or we could do the people that actually resurfaced it, whatever it was, twelve years ago. They were Trel or something, upstate Vermont, their, uh, pool, they did the resurfacing and patched when we had leaks before. And patched all that.
My concern is when there's a leak, um, it erodes the ground, so.
Yeah, and it's all sand there, so. Uh, we'll, we'll try to figure it out.
You know, I mean.
It's a forty-plus-year-old pool, so. Things are going to happen, so that's all I got, but I will look into that.
Thanks, thank you very much. All right, uh, Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant. It was a whole day without talking with you, so how are things?
So far, so good. Um, okay, so a few things left to cover, uh, from the, from the, uh, packet, the, uh, A, we've covered, B is the water connection request form from the water sewer committee with the modification requested.
Okay, let's see.
I gave you another table over there to stretch out with if you need more, more space, because there are a lot of stuff coming, so.
Give me my pink folder, so.
I did forget to be folder.
Okay, so B is a water connection request form that Bill has devised. I think Water Sewer Committee realized that we, people were, were of course appropriately contacting the city to connect for water supply to various businesses, but because we also assessed a, um, management fee, we needed to know when the connection occurred, so we devised our own form, and it's just for, you know, fifteen dollars um, to check, and that is B. I think, and this is Bill, Bill created it to conform with what our ordinance requests for information, so there's nothing unusual here. It's just putting in form, um, a way to get the information to us.
Yep.
So I'm.
With the signature, with the signature line added, it looks complete to me. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this form as the official form of the town for this connection.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the form, please say aye.
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 Aye. And anyone opposed? Then you've adopted the water connection request form.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
So I, like I told Robert Clark, I would send a copy of that to him, so they have it to help as well, and we'll get that online. Uh, C was the updated meeting schedule, and, uh, yeah, when the next one comes out, it'll have the fire state or the Public Safety Building Committee meeting added to it.
Thank you.
Uh, there are some agenda items, I'm there for some committees that we should probably get to, be helpful, uh, personnel. Committee would be good.
Who's on personnel? Sharon and JP.
Yes.
You got to go to another.
We need a personnel committee meeting, uh, so between you and JP, just come up with a time if you are able to and let me know, and we'll, we'll get it warmed, but there's some things to go over, so.
JP, are you still on?
I am.
We need to come up with a committee meeting.
Okay.
You and I are on personnel.
Yeah.
So just let Bill know when you're, let me know when you're available, and then if I'm available, then we're good.
Sure.
And Bill.
Thank you.
Bill, when you're talking to JP, JP, we need to schedule one with Larry, uh, for, uh, transfer station. Get a couple of those items just discussed.
Um, JP, we have the air conditioner going, and we realize it might be difficult to hear. Should we click it off for a while?
Um, I've been able to hear pretty good, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um, anything else for us?
Yes, uh, D in the packet was a request.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, that someone had sent in about the use of tables and chairs, and then they followed up further thereafter with their next, next message, so.
So historically, those have, those have only been allowed to town residents for use in, in the town.
I remember borrowing them for my Rotary Club's raffle, which actually is, that was in the town, because it was up at Diamond Run Mall.
So I remember an incident where they were used out of town, and it didn't turn out very well for us. And I, I won't mention any, anything further about that, but.
All right, so what's your pleasure with the request? They have a backup plan to borrow some.
So I, I would say we have to deny it. It's not in accord with our policy and practice.
Okay. Anyone opposed to the denial? I guess that's a double negative, but. Okay, so no action was taken on that.
I can, I can, I'll follow up with them.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, all right, uh, so the, the calendar tool, uh, we've had it up for a little while now on the website. The, as Kara talked about before, the tax installment dates are already on there. Uh, so, uh, if, that's, that's been kind of expanding on that too. So we have the tax bill installment dates on there, uh, meeting information is on there, event information, dates, the office is closed, uh, all that, all that is on there, so we've been using that, um, been, been really using that effectively since we, uh, since we got it.
Good.
Uh, and I think that's it. The, uh, the furniture was, was delivered and, uh, was really good, it was very, very nice.
Has anyone spilled anything on it?
Not yet, no. Uh, they did take the countertops, uh, so they're working on those and will get them back to us. They said the, the, this matter of when they get back down here, they're probably already done. They just need to get them back down here, and they'll be back and reinstalled, so.
Good, if you haven't seen them, they're nice, um, what, Vermont Prison Industries made chairs that, um, it's a, a double, double-person bench and a couple of armchairs and um, a round table, uh, for our, for when we kick you people out to do executive sessions, now you're going to have a place to sit in the hallway, so they look very nice. Thank you for lining that up, and thank you to Property Committee.
And there's also candy on the table out there for them as well.
I wasn't going to mention that part.
Well, Fred has walked by the table. I'm not sure if there's any left or not, but we'll have to see. Other than that, I don't think I have anything, all the, all the, you have the two committee meetings from yesterday are on your desk?
Yes, so we had the report from the fire chief about our survey of the property at McKinley. Um, we did have a water sewer committee meeting. We have dealt with the form that Bill concocted. Don, anything else you want to report about? And of course, we had Robert Clark to speak about the two grant loan programs. Anything else that we wanted to highlight?
No, we've covered pretty much everything.
Okay.
We did get, did you see the response from Kevin?
Yes. Um, we did ask for some guidance from our town attorney on our ordinance for um, sewer, and it appears the ordinance needs some works because they were competing.
Conflicts with this elf.
Yeah, so we need to work on that, and I emailed back to thank them, and I think we're.
I'm glad you thanked him, because I was just a little blurry after reading it.
I know, I know. Well, you know, water sewer is pretty riveting anyway, but there you have it. So, um, that's one of the things on our agenda.
Yeah, that'll go back on, that'll go back on the active list now, since we got a reply from him, so, yep. We'll decide what to do with them.
All right, anything else for Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant? We will be going into executive session after for a personnel matter, and if you could stick around for that, we'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, John Paul Fagnon, Town Health Officer, anything for us?
Uh, nothing current. Uh, the Holiday Inn report has been completed in with the state's attorney, and Mary, you were going to follow up with her to see where we're at with that, but
Yes.
Other than that, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you for that reminder. I do need to do that. Okay, um, committee meeting updates. We've covered both the rec committee, the water sewer committee, and the, uh, McKinley Public Safety Site Visit. Update on project lists. Um, we have talked about, uh, city water and city-town water situation and the idea of getting a study going on that. Town Hall Monument, we do have one, um, an additional person who is interested. I still need to, my apologies on that one, firm up a couple more folks and get that moving. Town Hall Building Improvements, um, that's the building committee, and we just spoke of the new furniture that came in. Pocket Park, Barbara reported on earlier. I think transfer station folks are going to be meeting on a variety of things, which probably. I think Transfer Station folks are going to be meeting on a variety of things, which probably will include the, uh, restroom facilities. Pedestrian Quarter, we just discussed, well, one of them anyway. Uh, two of them. Uh, Northwood Park Trail System, we heard a report from, uh, the rec committee and our rec director on grants that would enhance and extend those. Railroad Lawsuit, we haven't heard, well, we heard a couple of months ago from our town attorney on that. Water Sewer Inventory, I think we finished that, haven't we? Okay, so we can take that off the list.
Just one more manhole to boot.
Okay. Great, okay. Shared Use Path, um, that, that's underway. We're waiting for the, uh, runoff permit, whatever it's called. Stormwater Permit, thank you. Dilapidated Buildings, um, JP is working on that. Succession Planning, we do need to do some more on that, so we probably ought to have a session where we talk about that some. Um, Route 7 North, AKA JP's Sidewalk. Um, that is, I think there was a planning session that was held or was scheduled.
Now in the, it was held, and it's now in the hands of the, of that to start working on, so.
Okay, good, so that's moving along. Rooftop Solar Arrays, we should probably look at that again. Center Rutland Fire Station Lawsuit, we haven't checked in with Kevin lately on that. And New Public Safety Building, we have. So we've done a lot on that list this past couple of weeks, which is probably why your select board and department heads are tired. Okay, um, under New Business, the board, um, A, we've taken care of, the Road Inventory Grant, the River Creek Engineering, um, discussion about monies available. Is there any other new business? Mike Rowe is making hand gestures from the back row.
If there was a nun sitting up here, he'd be in trouble.
He would be in trouble.
Yeah.
Um, Old Business, Item A, any old business? Okay, good. All right, so if there's nothing further.
I do have, I do have a piece of old business. Um, is the executive session have to do with the, uh, pay issue?
No.
Because we, okay, so we found a situation where Walt was, uh, get, told by the board he had a dollar an hour raise almost three years ago, three and a half years ago. He never got the raise. It's kind of like the same thing that happened to Lynn Gallopp. So I've asked Bill, and, and I think, uh, maybe Carrie's helping out or, uh, Susan, but we need to get Walt paid back for like three years at a dollar an hour. Uh, Billy found this in the minutes where we authorized it, and Byron didn't know why it hadn't gone through, so it looks like we owe the guy the money plus interest.
Okay, then Carrie's nodding that she's aware of it and she's working on it, so.
Oh, cool. Okay, excellent. All right.
This is Carrie. I want to follow up with you. Hey. Um, I want to follow up with you on the email that you sent Bill, so maybe we can do that tomorrow and I'll get it all squared away.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate your help.
Hey, no problem.
Okay, good. Um, so we're at the end of the meeting, except for executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Would ask Bill Sweet to attend, if he would please.
I'll second a motion.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. Don, say aye.
All those three items.
Wearing a card?
Um, it's open.
It's open, you can open the door.
It's open session now.
My error, I missed a, uh, application for a liquor permit, a second-class liquor license. This is for, uh, Global Partners LP, which has entered in, into an asset purchase agreement with Sherman V Allen, Inc. For the property and convenience store located at 151 U.S. Business West, Center Rutland, which I think is
Right here.
Right there, yeah. Um, so they are requesting the second-class liquor license. They've submitted the necessary fees. And what's your pleasure, Chief? Did you take a look at these guys and these guys and?
I'm, I know all the company. They're also located in Rutland, and we never had a problem. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't allow it.
Okay. Um, and is this one where everybody signs?
Yes, this is the one where you need to sign, approve or deny.
In the correct blank, yes.
Please all sign under approve.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. I'm going to sign and pass it to Sharon. And oh, if there's no other business to be conducted, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye. To adjourn, I'll say aye.
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 Motion's adjourned. Have a good rest of the evening, folks. Thank you.